Yep, anytime.
Alright, everyone. Thank you for coming to the SLCM meeting for whatever month this is, May. Today, we have Amy Berry coming. She's the Chair of the Planning Commission. Sorry, she's also the past Community Council Chair for the Sugar House Community Council. And she's here to answer questions and kind of talk about the process. And then we'll leave the last 10 or 15 minutes for something from Jen Colby. So go ahead, Amy. Take it away.
Okay, thanks. I have a house full of dogs, so I will mute if they start barking. Because you never know what they're gonna do. But thank you, Landon, for asking me to come and talk to you guys. Just to give you a kind of a brief history of my community involvement. I joined the Sugar House Community Council back in 2008. And I served for nine years. I instantly became Secretary. I'm not really sure how that happened, but I got wrangled into that. And then I served in a variety of roles, Vice Chair, Chair throughout those nine years. And concurrently, I also then was on the Advisory Board for the Parks, Natural Lands, Urban Forests and Trails from 2012 to 2017. And I cycled off of both of those roughly the same time. And I thought I would do nothing, but that lasted a couple of months. And then I applied for the Planning Commission. And I was appointed back in 2018. I just finished my first four-year term, and my reappointment was approved Tuesday night by the City Council. And I'm currently serving as Chair on the Planning Commission. And so I was just asked to kind of start by talking about the role of the Planning Commission. And this may be really redundant for some of you, so I apologize. I don't really know everybody in the group anymore, and I don't know how much knowledge you bring to the table on that. So I am just gonna back up again and say, you know, Planning Commissioners are appointed by the mayor. We can serve two four-year terms, and that's all our bylaws allow. And then we're advising consent from the City Council. We are now currently at 11 members, but that just fluctuates over my four years. I think we even got down to seven at one point. So it's an evolving field of commissioners, but we have a pretty full slate right now. Five of them are pretty new. And just to let you all know, none of us get paid. We all do this as a volunteer and free. So we spend a lot of time doing this commitment, but I think there's a notion out there that we're paid employees or something. Anyway, that's kind of the gist of like Planning Commissioners work from all throughout all seven districts. So I wanted to back up and kind of give you a lay of the land of what happens with the Planning Commission in regards to applications. So we just had Michaela Ote at my request do kind of a day in the life of a project application. So I have some of it fresh in my mind, but I won't hit every point she did. You know, applications are filed by the property owner, or by, they can also legally be filed by somebody who's interested in doing a development, and those are mostly rezones, etc. So applications are filed, planners then get assigned to that particular project. And they work with the applicant for a variety of length of time. Sometimes if it's really complex, I mean, they've been working together for a year before it ever hits the community phase. So that's always just dependent on the project itself. Once it hits, once the planner or the applicant is like, I'm ready. Sometimes the planner will be like, hey, I think we still need to work on this, but the applicant is ready. They're not gonna take the planner's advice on everything. And that starts that community process clock. So Community Councils get noticed, and it starts your 45 days. They also will post a notice usually on the property in some way. And then if you are within 300 feet of the property, you will get a postcard. And that's really changed. I mean, back in my day and working with Judy, we would complain. It used to be 100 feet. So at least it's getting better, but it's still, that's still something inadequate. And then in that time, the Planning Office holds an open house, however they do it, whether it's virtual now or onsite or whatnot. And they're gathering public input. They then take that public input and go back to the applicant. And the applicant has access to Acela, which is where all of the project notes are happening. So a planner will be taking in all feedback. So they put out a project to other departments, other divisions in the city, transportation, engineering, you name it, right? And they give feedback, and it all goes into Acela. Public comments get put in there. And applicants always have access to that, so they can, they're not caught unaware by those things if they're getting input. But it's up to the applicant to choose if they want to make changes and whatnot based on some of that feedback. Although some of it is contingent, like fire and things like that, they wouldn't get their permit eventually if they don't comply with some of that. But, and then it's scheduled to come to the Planning Commission. And then the Planning Commission kind of has two categories, I think, that we work under. One being administrative. And those are things where we have the final decision-making authority, such as like conditional use, design and site review, plan development subdivisions. There's other things, but I don't, those are like the main ones that come before us all the time. And then we have what I call the legislative realm, which are things like rezones, master plans, text amendments, property dispositions, which really is in the form of alley vacations. Those are all things that we give a recommendation on, and they go to the City Council for the final decision. And they don't need to take our recommendation. They can do whatever they want at that phase. And then I wanted to just kind of wrap up, because I really wanted to do more of a Q and A. I think that's where we, you might get better understanding and get some of your questions answered here. Because in the Planning Commission, like meetings, it's just not really set up for this kind of a thing. But the appeals process. So if things get appealed that are in that administrative realm of the Planning Commission, and the applicant can appeal, but so can other people. You may be determined you don't have standing, but that's up to the appeals adjudicator. You can appeal those, and they go to the appeals board. And I honestly, that is like totally outside of anything that we deal with. And most of the time, I have no idea they're even having hearings. So I've never attended or watched one of the hearings live. I think there's five appeals officers. Paul Nielsen is the attorney for the city that sits in on the Planning Commission meetings and the Historic Landmark Commission meetings. And he keeps us very on the right track legally. He, I think he said he has five. They're all attorneys. I think two of them are previous planning commissioners. And they rotate, like, one of them hears an appeal. The whole panel doesn't hear every appeal. One of them will hear an appeal, and then they'll make their decision. And then that's final. I mean, I guess you could then take that to court. I mean, I'm sure you could, but most of the time, those decisions then are final. If somebody wants to appeal a decision that's made in the legislative realm, meaning like a rezone or a master plan, text amendment, those go straight to District Court. So they don't go to the appeals board that the city has in place for these things. And then, of course, we always turn this like over the counter. So anything, anytime I see a project and I know nothing about it, I realize it was over the counter. And those are things, those are projects that are meeting all of the all of the code and all of the zoning ordinance. And so they are not asking for anything different or special. I've been profoundly disappointed by most of the over-the-counter projects that I see. Not all of them, but most of them. And I've been pretty vocal about it with staff. And I think that it was later last year, they've realized there's been a big disconnect because permitting, to get your building permit was housed in Building Services. That has now been moved into the Planning Office. And so I hope in the future, we start to see better interpretations of what some of the code is. So we get some better, some better projects before they actually get permits. And that's really, so that's really what I wanted to just hit on. But I want to do question and answer for the most part. And I'll start off with Esther, because she submitted some questions a couple of days ago. And then, from then, I hope, all of the other things I really do want to talk about, I think I'll hit when we talk about, when I answer some of your questions, if that's okay with you guys. Okay, thumbs up from Landon. Alright, so Esther really kind of expresses a sentiment that, you know, planners might be overwhelmed. And she basically doesn't feel that they always do a thorough analysis of the pros and cons. I will interject her that that's not their job. Because a pro for one person is a con for another. And the code isn't written in a way that a planner would have an outline of what is considered a pro or a con. And so they simply don't do that. But she kind of leads into then stating that often the main reason for recommending approval cited is growing Salt Lake or the need for more affordable housing, regardless if the exception in Kennedy deliver more affordable housing. While that's not one of our questions, I do want to take a moment for that one, because I think that's an important distinction. I will also say, I mean, I've done four years now on the Planning Commission. And I had nine years working with Judy and doing a lot of land use for that big first phase of redevelopment in Sugar House. And I thought like, I kind of know the lay of this land, but I've had to learn an awful lot. And one of the things that's, there's a few things that's really surprised me. But because I think in the Community Council level, in my time, we always heard from the city, it was the master plan, the master plan, the master plan. And what I've really been taught now is that the plans, including Plan Salt Lake, are those big vision things, like these are the big goals we want to see. But what is the most important and what supersedes them are the legal standards. So even though planners are required to evaluate all of the applications to the applicable plans, that can be your master plan, Plan Salt Lake, there's another one out there. I can't remember the name of it. And I also think Plan Salt Lake is inspiring, but I can't remember where I read that. So we might be looking for a new kind of housing-focused plan, which I think is great because we've, Plan Salt Lake has really kept, moved us to this point. But we have a whole other set of challenges now that it would be good to have an updated plan on that. However, they analyze the plans ultimately is kind of irrelevant. I've been told that if the plans don't really support the standards, then the plan needs to be rewritten. If there's a difference, it's the standards that are the key to how the Planning Commissioners really have to evaluate projects, how staff evaluates projects, and how planners do as well. And so unfortunately, affordability isn't a legal standard. And so even though we're all very cognizant that the projects that come before us that are meeting the overarching goals of Plan Salt Lake aren't going to yield more affordability, that's not a criteria I can use in making decisions based on the legal standards that I have to operate under. So I think there just might be some miscommunications about or misunderstandings about when planners cite that, yes, Plan Salt Lake is those visions, those goals are being met by said project. That really isn't something that we really focus a lot on, because it's easy to meet those overarching goals. It's not that hard. So if something wasn't meeting any of those plans, then I might have a little problem. But for the most part, that's not what's really going into our decision-making. So I'll move into her first question. Has the Planning Commission been instructed to approve as much as possible in favor of the Grow Salt Lake Plan without other considerations? And if not, what instructions have been conveyed from the administration? I will answer that in no and nothing. We've never, ever, ever been given instructions on any of that stuff. I've never been told to approve as much as possible, ever. And the administration, I kind of look at as the mayor's office, and then the council office, and then I have planning staff. I certainly can talk to planning staff ahead of the meetings, but usually it's just to clarify if I have a question based on the staff report. I can't have discussions, you know, at length with them about any topic that's coming before us. And anytime I meet with somebody from the administration or the council office, Planning Commission topics are off limits. It's very unethical for them to try and direct us on how we should be voting or how we should be looking at whether it's a specific project or like approve everything you get. That's never, ever, ever come up. I've never had a problem with that. But Judy will tell you, I often say, I can't talk about that one. Can't talk about that one. I can't really talk about upcoming projects until they're done, and then I'm free to talk about them. And I'm pretty hyper vigilant about the ethics line. So, and I think if you know me, you would know that I don't, I would never, ever take marching orders like that from somebody of how I should be making decisions. So that just doesn't happen. It really doesn't. The second question Esther posed. For, oh, Landon.
Could we, could we go to the hands that are raised, and we'll come back?
Oh, yeah, I can't see that stuff.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's fine. There's three hands raised, and then we'll go back. Let's start with Nigel. Go ahead, Nigel.
Good morning. Thank you for your service. I've been involved with planning a lot recently, and I've watched a lot of your meetings. And I wanted to give a comment. I think you guys have been navigating a really difficult political situation with planning on a number of things very well. One of the things that stands out to me is the decision to not act on the homeless shelter moratorium. Can you give us a little bit of insight on that decision?
I'm trying to remember it. You know, my head becomes a jumbled mess with some points. I feel like I've been doing this for four years, and I probably have like a five-month window in my head when I can pull things up. So...
Well, I believe it happened in the last five months. It was...
Crap, darn it. I think so. If I remember that one right, that one was a legislative one, so we would have passed that on to the City Council.
Well, and that's what you did with no recommendation at all?
No, I think we did make a recommendation. We did actually make the recommendation. And it was, sorry, there they go. It was to to recommend that they not do a moratorium, if I remember right. I'd really have to pull...
No, you didn't. You didn't take a stance on it.
We did. We have to. We have to make a recommendation, whether it's positive or negative. But I, so we did make a recommendation. And I think it was that we recommended that, you know, no moratorium. But that one, we were back and forth. That one was so tough. And I remember commissioners, we all were, you can always tell when commissioners either really don't like a project or they're really struggling with it, because nobody really wants to make those motions. And I think there was no easy win for that one. Because there were compelling arguments for both ways to look at it. I might be remembering our ultimate recommendation wrong. But I think we all were just felt like we were stuck in the middle of trying to think about what the best recommendation would be. But it could have gone either way, because we could see both of those. And it wasn't an easy, that wasn't an easy vote. I didn't have to vote because I'm Chair. But I remember telling commissioners, like, I know this one isn't easy. You just have to follow your gut at some point on those. I mean, that's an unsatisfying answer for you, Nigel, but...
That's fine. I'll move on. I have one other question. And that's about the ADU modifications that dropped yesterday.
I can't talk about those. Yeah, I can't talk about that, because that's coming up to us at some point in this calendar year.
Okay.
Jan, go ahead, Nigel. Do you have another question?
No, thank you for your time again.
Alright, Jan, go ahead.
Amy, good morning. Thank you for your service. This is not an easy job. And we appreciate, I do, the time that you and others are putting into this. I've had an opportunity to go back and forth and talk with Sarah Durovanik in the Planning Office about a number of things. And one of the questions I posed to her was the phenomenal growth in terms of apartments that have been approved. And this has been during your tenure as well. And I, and her response back to me, because I said, can we put on the brakes? And he, and I'm just quoting her, I want to be very accurate. "We cannot stop property owners from developing their properties within the current zoning rules." And it gave me pause, because it just sounded like, and maybe I'm not understanding, we could see an endless number of apartment buildings or other things that may not be contributing as much as we would like them to the character of the city. And it gets back to the role, your role, the role of the commission. And forgive me for these terms. I don't mean them in a pejorative way. But does it then feel like that the Planning Commission is just a rubber stamp? I think those of us in the public would like to think you're a watchdog. There's got to be some kind of way that people who live here can communicate, and maybe we don't know how to do that, you know, some kind of control. Because it just, it's, you know, the thousands and thousands and thousands of apartments that are coming into this city, really changing the character of the city. Sorry, long question.
Okay, you hit on some great topics that I knew would come up. I think that, you know, speaking from somebody who, I'm just a citizen, right? I'm not an architect. I'm not a land developer. I'm not a real estate agent. I'm not a land use attorney. None of those things. I had very much the same notion about this kind of watchdog role. And it's just, that's not what the Planning Commission does. But I see that that is an expectation. And there is a profound misunderstandings of what we can do. And I would say what we can do is so much less than all the things we cannot do. Sarah is right that legally, the city cannot stop a development because they're balancing, they're trying to balance public input and public opinions to property rights. And we know property rights are vested in the Constitution. And so there's a lot of case law regarding property rights. And we live in a state that is controlled by a legislature that is very friendly to property rights and very friendly to developers. And there are a number of state laws that totally tie the Planning Commission's hands. And so it does then, it feels very much sometimes like we are a rubber stamp. And I would say personally, it took me two years to do a couple of things. One is to fully kind of understand those limitations, although I'm still learning them. But to really get a grip on those, and then to come to an understanding of where do I think I could try and make a difference. It's like two years to really kind of get my feet under me. And maybe that two years helped me, helped me come to terms with some of that, for better or for worse. But when it comes to if the zoning allows for a use. I'll give you an example. So this was back when I was in the Community Council. And that CSV pharmacy came on the corner of 13th East and 21st South, which is literally a stone's throw from my house. And I would look to some of the comments that we were gathering at the Community Council face. And there were a number of people that were like, well, you didn't ask me if I want a pharmacy there. And I was like, well, that's not a question that you get to answer. Like, if you want to control what goes on in that corner, you should buy that land. And then you get to determine its destiny. But a pharmacy, I mean, if I had my way, I don't think we need any more pharmacies, salons, or pizza joints in Sugar House. But that's my personal view. But if it isn't allowed use in that zone, the city can't tell that property owner who leased that land to CSV like, okay, we have enough pharmacies. The land use table doesn't say like, oh, you can have up to four pharmacies, and then you're capped. Like, a pharmacy isn't allowed use. So if the zoning allows for apartments and multifamily, then the city can't stop that. If people, I get this feeling, I mean, I live literally, I live right off of 21st South and 11th East. So I can't bypass this business district area. So I totally understand feeling like, can we stop this? Is enough enough? But that is not a Planning Commission role, because we don't make, we don't even determine zones, right? We make recommendations. That is totally legislative. And if people want to really try and I don't want to say stop developments, but try to figure out a way to handle kind of this growth that we're feeling, how the difficulties of, that is your City Council member. They are the ones that have the ability to look into what that means. So ultimately, you know, that would come before the Planning Commission. We'd give a recommendation. And then, but the City Council can make whatever decision they want. The difference being too, is that Planning Commissioners are appointed. And so I have some decision-making authority. But that's also one of the reasons why we are in this, like, I can't talk about things. Because anytime I'm going to talk about something that's coming up before us, it needs to be in a public meeting, like the city-run public meeting. Elected officials don't have those same things. So you can go talk to your elected officials about anything you want. So I get, I get the point that, you know, we, people come before us, and they're like, enough's enough, stop, stop, stop. But legally, it is not our ability to deny something that is meeting the zoning code or meeting those legal standards. If it meets those things, like, I have to legally vote yes. And so I really come to the determination that where I feel like I can try and make a differences in some of these things, try and figure out how to make them better, how to make them fit into the community better. And I'll just say again, Jen, this is one thing I hear a lot from people is, you know, vote no on this, vote no, vote no. And I know that they come with the expectation that if I vote no, I'm stopping this development. But really, like, usually the question for me is, can they have a reduced setback? So if I don't know that night, I'm saying, well, you can't have a reduced setback, but I'm not stopping the development. That's not within the Planning Commission's power. And so, you know, how can I address certain things about that project that are concerning and find a way to make that project better? For better or for worse, that's kind of where I've landed of like, what can I do to feel like I'm actually contributing to grow in my city?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, I'll tell you all, I'm endeavoring to be really honest with you guys today. Today, I hope that will help, you know, answer these hard questions and just give you a better understanding. It doesn't mean you'll be satisfied with it, but I, I'm gonna try and just be really direct with you all, so...
Go ahead, Donald, with your question.
Yeah, Don Emerson from Wasatch Hollow. And again, as others, Amy, thanks for your service. But I also want to thank you for doing this today. I think this profound misunderstanding that you mentioned is truly there. When I first got, I've only been in Salt Lake City a couple of years. And when I first joined, was that... When I first got, I've only been in Salt Lake City a couple of years. And when I first joined Wasatch Hollow. Community Council, I was surprised that we did not have a relationship with the planning commission. And and so I reached out to planning commission staff and said, we would like to. Have a conversation, a conversation similar to this, not on any particular proposal that was before you, but. Just an understanding, a conversation, so we could understand what the planning commission does. And the answer I got back was no, you can't have that conversation. The planning commission operates more as a judicial body than as a body that has discretion, I think.
Although I did talk to Nick and said, you know, hey. I mean, my first reaction when Landon asked me was like, why don't you ask Nick? Because he knows ton more than I do. But um. Oh, I I asked, I said, hey, Nick, they want me to do this. And he was fine with it because it's really, you're right, though. About, you know, planning staff would say no. You'd have to get a commissioner who's willing to do it and and I think understands that ethical boundary, which I do. So I didn't mean to cut you off, but go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think it's some, maybe some of that misunderstanding is because. People have been in other places. I headed up a district council in Fairfax County, Virginia for a number of years. And we were on very good terms with the planning commission member representing that district there. We talked a lot about. About these things. And I think maybe they had more discretion than you're allowed to have here in. Under the laws of of Utah. So again, thanks for doing this. I I mean, I think this is the kind of conversation I was hoping to have.
Good.
And it's helpful.
Good. I think that, you know, you can have a relationship with the planning commissioners and talk about philosophies and. You know, try to ask these types of questions. With us too, that's totally fine. It's talking about upcoming things, which which is just a real. It's really hard to tell people like, I can't talk about that. I mean, my aunt lives five blocks from me in Highland Park, and I have told her so many times, like. I can't talk to you about that. Like, stop it. Because ultimately, then I would have to recuse myself. And so, you know. Everybody's different, but I I I think these conversations can be had. There just has to be limits and understandings of this. So I hope this helps. Move that forward. I will say having relationships is a huge deal. When I joined the community council back in two thousand and eight. It wasn't, we didn't have the best referee reputation. We had a few really bad eggs on that community council that did a lot of damage. And so, you know. The core of us really started working to rebuild those relationships and having good relationships with. Staff at the city, regardless if it's planning or parks or transportation is so key. And yeah, you want to know your your elected officials and work with the administration, but. Staff is like where where all the magic happens. So. The, you know, talking to them is always a good thing. And that's really the relationships to build. Planning commissioners. You can still talk to us in that about these general type things, but. You know, we can't affect. We can't affect projects in that realm. And honestly, like commissioners, like I can't even talk to other commissioners about projects until the meeting. So we're not having conversations at all until we hit the the public meeting. So.
Well, might it be possible for you or perhaps the commissioners who happen to reside within. District six to come to a community council meeting and explain that with, we're not talking about a particular proposal, but just on the role of the planning commission and.
I I think that is totally fine. And those are things that I would work through with. Planning leadership, just so they know what what we're doing and. But yeah, I mean, Nick was like, I'm fine with you doing that. He didn't care. But I think it's always good, you know, more communication is better. Yeah, you have. Amy Burrows, and she's fairly new, so she's still learning. And then, oh, Maureen, my vice chair, she's in district six, and she's actually been there longer than I have. So Maureen would be. A good one to invite as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the the phone numbers and email addresses are not posted, so it's sort of like you're insulated. We we.
Landon can give you my email and then I can try and get you.
Yeah, Donna, if you send me your email address, I'll send it to you. Yeah, welcome to Salt Lake.
Right.
All right, Amy, go ahead.
No, I've been experiencing that cognitive dissonance the entire meeting, Amy Berry. Yeah, yeah. Shout out to Nova with its generous per pupil student spending. Am I right? Yes, anyway. Yeah, so this is sort of a question for Amy Berry and Judy and others who may be sat on both sides of. Community councils and the plan and commission. What I struggle with the most, and it sounds like a lot of folks on this call are deal with these issues is. Communicating with and about community members about these very issues that the planning commission can only. Legally, by policy, consider certain pieces of information when considering whether or not to recommend or approve. A project because people have such strong gut feelings about whether, you know, something is wrong. You know, it's it is wrong that a project is this tall or a project might have this use. Or I struggle to talk about what the goals are and asking for, you know, building standards to be outside current zoning, you know, what. A plan development is versus saying like, something is going through the conditional use process. So instead of. You know, the maximum height for this zone is sixty feet, but actually it's ninety feet because they're going through conditional use. You know, we've we've hosted a zoning one-on-one presentation, but this topic really feels impenetrable. And and, you know, even privately, having been in these conversations and having, you know, a. Working con body of knowledge about this. I struggle to consider what's worth including in a community letter if we're objecting to a variance or rezone. Or descriptions in an area plan, you know, are some things worth including for this wider conversation? For our elected officials. Things that the plan commission, things beyond what the plan commission can consider. Could folks lend perspective on this?
Yeah, so those are, those are great. I mean, okay, so. Planning one-on-one still feels impenetrable to me as well. I mean, this is like, I view this now as just this ongoing. Education and it and some of it is me resetting, being open to. Realizing that maybe I've looked at something wrong. Like, maybe I've looked at how this growth happens wrong. Because as I continue to read and take continuing ed opportunities that. The planning office provides when there's like a conference in town. I've really had to come to terms with like, huh, maybe I need to view this different. So I don't think there's a. A magic button for you, Amy, that. You can help people. And I'll be so brutally honest here, the majority of people do not want to be educated. They want to come and tell me what to do. And when I don't do it, then they leave totally upset. And I struggle with that. I have seen that from now on, way back from two thousand and eight on the community council. So it's it's nothing new. It's just kind of human nature. They're they're up in arms because something got too close to them and they don't like it. And I totally appreciate that. I I cannot stress enough how much, you know, my my neighborhood has. Been impacted by what's going on on the in the business district. And so. I get it. I do, and we get it. And I think having, putting those things in your comment letters to us that we read. Is always a good thing, especially if it's a legislative item, to move it on to the city council, but. You know, those should be on the record. And and there may just be a point where you realize, like, you can only do so much to try and educate. Some of your community members who just really aren't, they don't want to listen to that because it's not giving them the answers that they want. But it's an ongoing process. And I think for you. Understanding then, if there's comments that you can then forward as a community council member. Or, you know, in in that in that aspect, I'm always reading the comments and I'm listening for something I can do something with. But the majority of comments that we get from the public are just simply things that I have no control over. If somebody's coming complaining like, this is going to be thirty-five feet, that's too tall. And I'm like, but the zone allows for it. Like, I can't. I can't stop somebody from meeting the the ordinance, right? So. If they're meeting the ordinance, then that's what we call by right. They can do that by right. And I have zero say of that. So does city. City has zero say in that and that because that's what the zoning is. The city council wants to change that zoning. That is their purpose. I think it can just, there's a part of this, Amy, that's just very unsatisfying. In in trying to. Help people feel like their engagement matters, which is super important to me. But it's it's also like feels very unattainable. But if you and if there are other community members that are really more interested in trying to provide. That feedback that planning commissioners can do something with. I think you need to tie them to the standards. So in every staff report, you see that matrix of standards. And they're all different depending on what's coming for us. There's planned development standards, conditionally used standards, all that. Is look at those standards, look at how staff evaluated them. And then if you have an alternate view of it, communicate that. That doesn't mean all the command planning commissioners will agree with that. But that's where I feel like our role as commissioners is. Staff has evaluated those things and staff doesn't do, they do that collectively. So anytime a project is working through the process, a planner is meeting with their team, their supervisor and leadership. And they're evaluating those things all along the way. So when. The staff report says staff recommends approval, it means staff. The planner themselves is leading it through this process, but it is full on staff and team efforts that. Are evaluating all of these things to these standards. If I go counter to staff's recommendation, which is fine and is totally what my role should be. I though have to tie it to one of those standards and articulate why I don't think that standard was actually met. If we table something because this thing is just isn't ready, Coachman's is the best example that just happened. So it's fresh in my mind. We tabled that in November because we just didn't feel like that was ready at all, even though staff was recommending approval. We gave very specific direction to staff of what we wanted them to work with the applicant on. Then they came back, we evaluated based on that. So but we have to give them very specific reasons of like, all right, we're tabling this because it's not ready. Because this standard, you're not meeting it to our satisfaction. Those are the things that that I try and and look for, but I I hear you. And I I feel it. I'm I'm on that journey with you at the same time. And while I'm chair, I try to do more education efforts, but I also realize. It doesn't really penetrate people who just really aren't in a place where they want to hear that stuff. But I try. And I'll keep trying. And hopefully we create, you know, a better dialogue and that people understand where they can try to make a difference and where they can. Maybe where they're not going to do everything they want on this project, but where to go to the city council to talk about these things and see. You know, how they may want to address some of those, some of that angst we're feeling. That's my answer on that one.
Landon, you're muted.
Landon, I saw your lips.
My fault. Amy Berry, we have about three more. We have three more questions. You okay to take them?
Yeah, go ahead.
Jen Colby, go ahead.
Sorry, let me unmute here. Yeah, Amy, thanks for taking the time. I just had a sort of a comment and a question. At the earlier, you had mentioned how critical the standards were and sort of put them like as though. Master plans and other plans were. Almost secondary or. Some of the planners have said are advisory, however, the standard in twenty-one A clearly states. Whether, for example, with zoning changes, whether map amendments. Are consistent with purposes, goals, and objectives of policies. In planning documents and master plans. So I guess I find. That the standards do refer to them, so they aren't in my mind just advisory. And I often see staff reports that. Yeah, these are huge documents, the master plans, but we'll sort of cherry pick some of those. So I guess that's where. I have some concerns and I hope that the planning commission has time, because I realize you're volunteers and how demanding this is, to dig a little deeper. But I just wanted to emphasize that, that the master plans are really guiding documents as well as the zoning maps and that I'm hearing more. Sort of trying to sort of downplay them, even though they. Are incredibly critical documents. And if we need master plan dates, I would hope that this is not your value, but the council would fund them. But. Anyway, I just wanted to point that out because they're very directly tied in the standards. And a lot of them are also about impacts to adjacent properties and whether those are positive or negative. I mean, I think there is more value. It's it's, we can evaluate those impacts as positive or negative more clearly. So that's just one comment. And and the other being sort of expecting the public to have to dive deep. I go into these and I spend. Days of my private time trying to write up comments that are useful to you. And I don't always feel like that. Gets us anywhere and that sometimes, in fact, it's public clamor that actually makes more difference. So. It's a bit of a conflict there. But my question is. That, you know, given that the planning commission is charged with following city codes. As best as, you know, you can with your judgment and making decisions on applications. We're often seeing frequent split decisions. So there seems to be very different perspectives that are brought to the table. And what's your perspective? Yeah, maybe that's my statement, but what's your perspective on why this is happening? And.
Yeah.
That's my perspective on what?
Why we're seeing so much. So if you really are. Tightly by the rules and have very limited decision space, we're often seeing. Split decisions and very different opinions in discussion at the commission. So how do you resolve those?
I think that we are eleven people with eleven different views and eleven different backgrounds and. The newer commissioners tend to still need time to find their feet as well. So you think. When I first started, you know, I I would vote because I'm like, I just don't like that. But I was often like one of the few no votes. And so there's there's an element where. I know I'm not going to stop this project, but I might be the lone no vote and so I'm going to vote no. I mean, that happens. And I I think I don't, public clamor doesn't really, does not make me think differently about something. Just so you know, like, the more people that come out, I think it's great. I want people to participate, but. It, I am legally bound to use the legal standards as. Articulating if I'm going to vote contrary to staff's recommendation. I have to say which standard isn't being met and articulate why I think it's not being met. And those are totally open to interpretations. So when we have divisive split votes, I think that's great. I think that commissioners then are. Are getting more engaged and they are thinking these through. And 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 that's what I like to see. I don't think unanimous votes are always. Reflective of unanimous thoughts. It's just. The more we discuss things and the more we contribute individually to those discussions. I mean, I always look to other commissioners are thinking because it helps me process this. Because I haven't had a chance to talk to anybody about it prior to the meeting. And so. It's a, it's a journey that night for us. But I will just tell you, Jen, I used to leave the planning commission. When I was in the community council, thinking like, why do I bother? I totally understand that thought. I, it it weighs on me of like how to try to to make that better, but. I I I haven't hit the solution on that one yet. And and not everybody is going to dive deep. I get it. So everybody's comments have value. And and I do want to hear them. Mostly, though, I'm trying to parse out the ones that I can do something with. But everybody deserves to be heard and they deserve to have a forum for their voice. And if there is an opportunity that I can help try to answer some of those questions they pose or try and respond in a way to try to help them understand, like, I just. You know, I know you're all worried about this isn't an affordable housing project, but affordability is not a legal standard. I cannot. Valuate this project based on that notion. You know, I try to do that. My abilities.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Martha, you want to ask your question?
I don't have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to, okay. So uh, I mean, one of the things that's happening now is that um, you have very aggressive developers approaching longtime property owners. Um, purchasing property or wanting to purchase property, large blocks of property, multiple houses. These are residential houses, people live there with their families. And telling people that if they don't sell now quickly, you know, they're going to be, you know, they're going to um, be surrounded by warehouses and that um, they already know that all their other neighbors are going to sell the property. And they're going to go to the city and get M one, get their current AG two zoning change to M one. And, you know, they're often out of state. The money may be somebody in the United States, but we wonder at times because of the volume of, the amount of money that's being spent. And that sort of um, very unethical aggressive nature is something that on zoning changes. Most people don't understand that it really isn't easy to change zoning, but I think including some of the developers. So my question to you, and I don't want to take a lot of time, is just, you know, in those types of situations, I often feel we come to the planning commission, not because we think the planning commission will do any or can do anything, but because we want people to know what's happening.
I think that's great, and I
And what, and what can, yeah, I, I don't know how um, yeah.
You know, and when I'm looking at a rezone request, um, we are evaluating those too. That's really, we still have standards for that, but that's really kind of when those master plans come into more of a play of of uh, like what is the overarching goal of that master plan? And sometimes I'm shocked to find that the master plan calls for um, you know, light manufacturing in this area. Or like, you know, research park in that area. And I'm like, really? Not where I would have put that thing, but um, you know, I'm looking at, does this potential new zone fit that area, fit that neighborhood, would it, would it work well? Sometimes we're really asked to be rezoning like just like a couple parcels. And so then I'm really looking at those, does it make sense? Does it fit? Those are the, the types of questions in my mind when I get a rezone request. Um, but then ultimately that is the, the city council's decision. And the city council has a lot more uh, flexibility than planning commissioners. If they, they don't have, they're not as bound by those legal standards as we are because they're elected officials. And this is a legislative decision in, in that scope, not an administrative ones. So, you know, you have as a community, you start with the planning commission and all of their voices should be heard. They should get on the record, whatever then the recommendation is from the planning commission. You have a lot of opportunity to really work that city council, not just your member, but you should be talking to all of them. And, and get them to see that like that's not an appropriate zone for this area. Um, and that's, that's my recommendation for those things. Um, but that's what I look at when I get a rezone request. Does this really make sense and does this fit? And hopefully it doesn't call out in the master plan that we want a research park on these agricultural lands. Because when it does, I'm like, well, I don't agree with that at all, but that's what the, the plan says. So, anyway. It looks like we have Cindy left. Now I
Yeah, last question, Amy. So go ahead, Cindy.
So it's a, it's a comment, Amy. First of all, thanks for spending yet another hour in service of the city. Um, your meetings have been long of late. Um, back in nineteen ninety-five, the city greatly restricted by a huge magnitude. Who could initiate a petition? And it came down to the property owner or agent, a member of the city council, the mayor, or a member of the planning commission. The planning commission has the authority to initiate a change to twenty-one A and has had that authority for decades and has not used it recently. I hear when I attend a lot of complaints about the rules, the commission can initiate changes to the rules, which it has done recently, and we won't talk about that. It was done at the request of planning staff. But my feedback to the commission is that you're in the backseat. You can get in the front seat unless the state statute, LUDMA, restricts you, which it does on conditional uses, for example. But the requirements for plan developments are way too loose. And there's huge cash value in what developers are asking for and getting. And the planning commission could tighten those up and get better projects. It could change the rules. So I just want to emphasize that you are not bound to the rules as they exist now. You can't change them while an application is in front of you. But the commission that I was a part of initiated changes to the ordinance frequently. It was a very um, uh, we're going to fix this group of people. And I tagged along, to be honest with you. It was my good fortune. So um, I would just urge the commission to use its authority to initiate land use changes um, instead of being stuck with the rules as they exist, which clearly are not working to our advantage throughout the city. We are not getting enough.
Thank you for those comments, Cindy. Um, you do express them during meetings as well. And, and it was me that initiated the petition on the ADU. Um, I posed, I posed it to the planning commission and then it was a, a majority vote. Um, I, to, to the fact that the planning commissioners could initiate a petition was news to me as of a year ago. So I didn't know that, but it is just a petition. Um, it does have to go to the city council. So this idea that I can change the rules is not, not completely accurate. But that might just be me splitting hairs with you, Cindy. So I understand what you're saying. I'm loathe to initiate petitions if I don't have the full support of staff because it involves their time and their efforts. So I, I had those discussions with, with leadership of like, I really want to initiate this petition. What do you think? Um, as a caveat, I, uh, one of the upcoming meetings, we're going to be doing an education for commissioners per my request on um, the role of, of initiating petitions and how um, the leadership at, at the planning office kind of view that so that we're all um, not, we're all operating on the same page of understanding. Um, that doesn't mean we'll all view it the same way, which is fine, but that's an upcoming education. Um, those are usually happening between five and five-thirty. Um, so you're always free to come to that part, but they're not recorded, unfortunately. So it's, it's on, it's on my, my um, agenda or it's on my, my, my view. I don't know that we will go willy-nilly on, you know, petitioning, initiating petitions left and right. And it will ultimately be, I would say this, I'm one commissioner out of eleven. You know, I have to get a majority to, to approve that. Um, so any, any commissioner could initiate a petition and then it, it's got to be a vote and then we see where that lands. Um, so um, you know, I, I have used that, that role recently with the ADU. That then is kicked back to staff. Um, so we'll see where all that goes, but I, I appreciate, I always, we always appreciate your comments, Cindy. And, and um, obviously in nineteen ninety-five, I was nowhere near community, so it's good to know this.
Um, I, I don't think there's any question that proposals that reduce the workload or make um, it easier for the staff to get through the staff reports would, would be met unfavorably by the staff. Um, and, and so I think
Yeah, those are conversations that, that I hope that we as a commission start having more of. Once the commissioners kind of, Mikhail will come and, and, and talk to us about what, what, you know, what we can do, how staff view that, what kind of the role will be, just that give and take and yin and yang of, of initiating petitions. Um, and it is, uh, so I hope that I'm starting that uh, education for us all. And when I want to educate commissioners, I always hope that it helps educate the public as well. But um, you know, we'll, we'll see where that journey takes us. But I definitely think we have some commissioners now that are keen on, on, on tackling some of those things.
Hey, hey, Amy Berry, um, can I take some of the questions in the chat and send them to you? And maybe you can respond in a email to me later and then I can get them out to the network.
Sure. And then the ones from Esther I didn't hit on.
Yeah.
Those as well.
Thank you. Hey, thanks for coming. I think this was great.
Hope so. Thanks for your time, guys, and thanks for your participation and, and know that at least I think it really matters. And, and I appreciate um, all the efforts you guys put into this, so until next time.
Thank you.
Landon.
Thanks, Amy. All right, Jen, I'm going to turn a few minutes. I know we're over just a bit. I didn't think there'd be that many questions, but go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Um, this is just a really quick preview, honestly, of our suggestion that Cindy had had for an upcoming meeting topic. And I think this is something, we think we're talking a lot here about rules and following the rules. And then we have this huge wide open space where there's a fair number of property owners not following current city rules. And I'm speaking specifically of short-term rentals. And that is in the larger context of preserving existing housing. We've had such a focus on new development, which is extremely difficult to balance in an older city like Salt Lake that's effectively built out. Um, but as we're looking at our housing shortage and even looking into the growing Salt Lake plan, there is actually a lot of emphasis on minimizing neighborhood impacts and compatible infill and preserving existing housing and supporting uh, perhaps owners of either substandard properties or existing affordable properties. Um, so there's a couple of different threads here. And this again is focused on how do we really work to and work with the city to support existing housing, rather than feeling like we're sort of seeing just tear downs everywhere and giant podium buildings going up. So uh, regarding the short-term rentals, I think everyone is facing these in our districts. We've seen this come up recently at the planning commission, their attempts at enforcement. We know the ci- the um, city's hands are tied to some degree, but I think this is a topic that people are asking for resources on how to help with enforcement. We're also just seeing this as a potential substantial um, impact on current rental and for purchase housing market and properties. So if something is, if someone is able to make a lot of money with short-term rental, they're not likely to be putting that house out on the market for a, you know, owner occupied option or even for a rental. So anyway, this is, this just, I guess, points to some, to some degree to this, both the silos in the city and the lack of resources in certain areas, for example, in enforcement. So this was just a topic that has just keeps bubbling up as a great concern about where our missing housing actually is and how we have housing sitting here that's not being perhaps made available to longer-term rentals or even for purchase. And how do we potentially focus on that collectively and perhaps what might be some solutions? So I just wanted to, Cindy brought that up. We've been seeing a lot of this. We have specific cases, for example, where you know, the enforced, the properties are, it's so valuable to do this that, and we have companies that basically manage multiple properties that will just fight back. And, and luckily so far, the city has managed to do, you know, win on a couple of enforcement cases. We have somebody else recently and Jason knows all about this, um, as well as Central City and East Central. They got an enforcement action on short-term rentals and then turned around and have a request for a rezone to try and get out of the enforcement conundrum that they're in. So we've got multiple issues there. But anyway, happy to take some suggestions on how we go about sort of putting together a presentation and to sort of focus on these issues for a future meeting. And just wanted to put that out there as something that is incredibly timely and something that's of great, seems to be of increasing concern in our communities. And that's, that's really all I had today. So Cindy wanted, Cindy had uh, and I had been discussing this along with some other people behind the scenes. And we just wanted to bring it forward to the whole group.
I, I think it's great. Cindy, do you have anything to add?
Um, no.
Okay.
We're over time and we have a lot to digest. Thanks, everybody, for being here. And um, as I often close my messages onward.
All right, we just have one more thing from Jason Stevenson. Go ahead.
Thanks, Landon. I just wanted to let folks know that a bunch of community councils, including many on this call, are going to be hosting a Senate District Nine debate on June first at Salt Lake Community College, uh, the South Campus off Seventeenth South. Um, Senate District Nine is a new district. Derek Kitchen is the incumbent. He's being challenged by Dr. Jennifer Plum. It's going to be a pretty close Democratic primary. And so a bunch of community councils are putting together a debate. The hosts are going to be Ally Velarta from City Cast Salt Lake and Roger McDonough from KCPW. Um, so watch uh, some information about that on Elko's Facebook page. Um, any council that has not uh, sort of wanted to join this event, if you've overlapped with District Nine, reach out to me. Um, we'd be glad to send you the publicity and get you involved. Again, June first, um, Senate District Nine debate at Salt Lake Community College. Thanks, Landon.
Jason, what time is that?
It's going to be seven o'clock to eight-thirty.
Okay.
Jason, do you have a flyer for that?
Yep, was just working on one right now. So with our new moderator pick. So I'll send that over, Jasmine, if that would help.
Okay, thanks, Jason.
All right, thanks, guys. I hope this was helpful today. So thank you. We'll see you in June.
Nice job, Landon. Thank you.
Went real well.